Can everybody hear?
You hear.
All right.
I don't know.
Wonderful. They said they can hear.
Okay.
Yeah, that's true. All right, we're moving on. Calling the meeting to order, we will stand for the pledge and a moment of silence. Sorry. Roll call.
Marshall. Baum. Ramsey. Rick. Roarva.
Here.
Sheer. Stein. White.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Ramsey is out for personal reasons. We did meet on October thirteenth, an executive session for personnel. We'll open up the microphone to anyone in the audience, but first I do have Rhonda Wassler.
All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome, welcome. I haven't been very little busy this fall, so I haven't made it yet this year, and I apologize. So this evening, I'm here on Music Boosters, the music department and the Thespian Society, which I also picked up this year underneath my lovely hat of many things I do. So this fall, the season is drawing to a close for the Rocket Marching Band. We have successfully pulled off a fun and very energetic show for Rigid. We are proud to share that the show was written by the incredibly talented and assistant director, Mr. Bupp. If you did not know that, all of the music was written by him. The band is very excited to welcome Mr. Eckersley. He's done a fantastic job, as well as the other team of directors that are working with him. We held a successful marching spectacular in September, band night in October, and we had a great job representing all of SG at Red Lion and Dover's marching band shows, as well as, thank you, Dr. Renaud, for our winning best band in the Halloween parade. We especially were very proud of our students who raised more than several hundred dollars in just candy alone for the spectacular. And because of that, our directors, who were very brave, took a few pies in the face. I sent some pictures to the board, so please look through that. It was lovely. It was fantastic to watch them get, you know, obliterated by their students. As a result, they have had a lot of success, and our spectacular actually raised a great deal of money this year, more than we've had in the last few years. So that was a very good plus for us. Music Boosters would also like to send a thank you to the many volunteers and now community members who have stepped up to support us during the Booster Spirit Store at the Varsity Games. That's had another successful year, and as we're drawing to a close, we always offer feedback for merchandise that you want to see in the store for next year. Congratulations to several high school's choral students who performed at the York County Honors Choir Festival last weekend. They include Molly Lee, Chloe Hammack, Aurora Bonnie, Cambria Grady, Ava Beasley, Cadence McGinnity, and a little biased Ally Wassler. Additional to extend congratulations to Brian Myers and A.J. Messinger, who were selected this very past weekend to represent Spring Grove at PMEA District Shoven Choral Festivals. This was more than a hundred and some. I think there were eighty-one applicants for A.J.'s alto section, and she came in eighth out of eighty-one. So that was pretty, pretty phenomenal. As we move into the next few months, you're going to see a lot more auditions taking place across PMEA, including the acrobello, the district band, jazz band. We hope that have been many several, several students applying and getting those honors. And we're looking forward to modern band, as their district modern band will be held in the spring, as well as we are hosting again for that festival. In November, the community, the theater department is presenting Just Chalk or Fire on November twenty-first, twenty-second, and twenty-third. This year's fall play is a modern take on the classic Our Town. It's based on a novel by Zachary Olson, and it goes through the experiences of high school theater students as they experience auditions, friendships, secrets, crisis, courage, the joy of performing, and of course, personal growth. In November, we're going to be transitioning into our winter seasons for band, including pep band for basketball games and indoor color guard. They have a ton on their schedules for both of them. The Triumph Honor Society will be holding their music department for merchandise sale, as well as their inductions for this year. And the music department will have additional opportunities for the community to visit and see our and celebrate our students at the Veterans Day at Windy Hill, Pigeon Hill Strings Festival, and some presentation of our elementary bands using technology this year, which is, that'll be new and coming. In December, you'll see us at the SG tree lighting, as well as the concerts, which I listed for you. SGI will be on December eleventh. The middle school will be on December sixteenth, and the high school will be on December seven, eighteenth. Again, we thank all the board members, the community members, and the district administrators who joined us at all of these events. We always encourage you to be thankful with the students, as well as everyone who else is involved, and we encourage you to enjoy the shows and performances. And the directors have extended a handsout to all of the and anyone who would like to learn some music routines and learn what it's like to be a student in the music program. Please join them during their scheduled schedules, which is various, you can see the administrators for all of those, to sit in on some classes and see what it's like to be a music student in SG, offer positive feedback, fist bumps, gratitude, and otherwise show your appreciation for their hard work. And we also encourage anyone who's an alumni to join us at the winter concerts onstage. That's it. Thanks, guys.
Thank you so much. Anyone else in the audience that would like to address the board at this time? All right, seeing none, I will toss it. Sorry, for the student representatives' report.
Perfect, thank you, guys. I'm Cameron Little, and I can't wait to share with you guys what these amazing schools have been doing so far. So first, Spring Grove Elementary, students' leadership team met to count their project team tokens that students earn for school-wide rewards. Their first reward was held on the sixth, with students receiving a special recess time. SGE Title Department One held a meeting for the parents of students that qualified for the Title One program. At that meeting, teachers explained the program and gave the parents an opportunity to ask questions. They received books and activities that they could take home to help support their children. Next, SGE PTO had the annual Fall Festival for all families to enjoy. At that event, money was collected to support the fallen officers. The PTO also held a book fair for all families. The first big buddy meeting, high school students buddying up with little buddies from SGE, was held on the fifteenth. The SGE autistic support classes held a trunk or treat for all of the autistic support classrooms on the evening of the sixth. The elementary phys ed teachers held a kindergarten through second grade dance night for students and their families on the twenty-third. Then next, for Paradise Elementary, buddy program multi-age classes work together once a month to promote collaboration and socialization for different age groups. This works hand in hand with the project team action plan. Fourth grade students worked with Mr. Warts to record the morning announcements. New math curriculum reveal was implemented. Student council meeting started on October eighth. There were some PTO fundraisers, R and K subs, Anchor Down, Sweet Frog, Touch a Truck, which is a tissue donation. And there were some activities, which are the Fire Prevention Day, Family Skate Night at Magic Elm, K through second grade had a family dance night, and the strings slash band lesson start. Next, at New Salem, they had the Project Team Day, which is held every other Friday starting October third. Kindness Week is October twentieth to the twenty-fourth. Fire Prevention Day was held on October sixth. Cherry Dale fundraiser assembly was September twenty-sixth. The PTO trunk or treat was October eleventh. Parents Staff Rocket Response Forum was on October sixteenth, and Project Team Bingo is October thirty-first. Then Spring Grove Intermediate, the school stores every Wednesday, run by the PTO. And the PTO also had their first fundraiser being picked up on November fifth. The middle school, web leaders continue to excel in facilitating academic and social lessons designed to help seventh graders successfully achieve in middle school. A group of eighth grade students have partnered with the Life Skills Classroom to beautify the school courtyards, an ongoing student-driven project that promotes collaboration and pride in the school campus. Also, there are student leaders who provide tours for new students and serve as informal mentors, helping them feel welcomed and connected to our school community. Middle school students are participating in music lessons and courses have experienced an exciting transition this year with the addition of a new educator for general music and new phase for middle school orchestra and band. This change has brought fresh energy, new ideas, and renewed enthusiasm to our music program. The extension of ten minutes, five of which are to music ensembles during period ten, have provided students with more focus time to rehearse, collaborate, and strengthen their musical skills. Additional time in the morning has been added to homeroom, which allows teachers to further connect with students by providing opportunities for meaningful check-ins, relationship-building activities, and social environment support. This extra time helps teachers understand students' individual needs, celebrate their successes, and create a positive and supportive day, start to their day. The middle school strives to make sure all students feel respected and valued through several student-led clubs, such as Club Connect, Be a Buddy, and Penn Friends. These clubs actively build bridges between middle school and other schools across the district. These clubs not only promote inclusion and friendship, but also empower students to take ownership of their school climate. Seventh and eighth grade students have started taking the Firefly Benchmark as a means to access their academic growth. Identify areas of strength and improvement to guide targeted instruction to support continued learning and success. This assessment was originally piloted by one teacher during the 2024-2025 school year. Teachers have appreciated the provided data and use the information provided as a means to inform instructional practices. Then lastly, the high school. So the high school clubs have officially started on Wednesday, September tenth. We officially started clubs at the high school, and the students are enjoying the vast array of options we have to offer. The homecoming parade and bonfire was supposed to be September twenty-fifth. Unfortunately, due to weather issues, it was canceled. Then the homecoming pep rally was during school on nine-twenty-six. Homecoming dance was on nine-twenty-seven. Trunk or treat is on October twenty-eighth. We thank our custodians for all their hard work by giving them a free luncheon. Applications opened September eighth for the York County Alliance for Learning One-Day Career Exploration Centers. Students have the ability to sign up for these one-day sessions in which they will have hands-on experience about certain job fields. It looks like students have been enjoying the change in the block scheduling, where now we only have four periods in a day rather than eight. Students have explained they feel less stressed with work and can get a lot done in class now. And then lastly, the high school has created Mission Control, where students have about forty-five minutes a day after first period to get help from teachers in certain classes, or you can also go to a club you're involved in to talk about upcoming events. I know this is a really big help for student council. So that's everything I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Cameron. Moving on to the superintendent's report with Dr. Renaud.
I can't follow that. I mean, Cameron, that was outstanding. So my first shout-out is to Cameron for doing such a great job. I'm just sitting here listening. Wow, that's really a lot of cool stuff. So thanks for gathering that and presenting it so well. So thank you. My first shout-out, that's my first one. Okay. My second one, very quickly, I, for the first time in this kind of a forum, I would like to introduce Dr. Julie Janis, who is now laughing because I'm doing that. And stand up, stand up. There we go. Congratulations, Julie Janis. She's the principal out at Paradise, as many of you know, and she did just complete her doctorate through Immaculata University. Dr. Janis, tell us the title of your dissertation and your, how you defended it.
So with a certificate, teachers process, so it's able to pay for start of the speech. So it was very studying how teachers, explaining structure, the district, learned a lot about it, and yeah, it was a great, great opportunity. I defended it September thirtieth through committee and, uh, please, please support us.
Very good. Thank you and congratulations. So anyone who wants to know more about structured literacy, you now know who the expert is. She's being published, actually. You have published, so. Next, I'd like to also, Jen Levo, if you would like to stand up. And while she's standing up, Jen, as you know, is our assistant business manager, and she just recently received a renewal of the status of the Pennsylvania Certified School Business Administrator. Is that correct? I just want to make sure. Okay. This certificate is given for four years, and it demonstrates her dedication to professional growth and her commitment to excellence in school business. Congratulations, Jen. No, I didn't give you a chance to speak, but if you want to say something, you just have to stand up and start talking. Okay, moving on, some high school shout-outs to the, in field hockey, to high school senior Cassidy Hinson, who's reached an impressive milestone with her four-hundredth career save. She's a goalie. I guess you figured that out by what I just said. Also, also on field hockey, Ivy Bechtel, who scored her fiftieth goal, also a senior, again in field hockey. In golf, congratulations to Jaden Farrell, who qualified for the state golf tournament, which was held. He didn't get a medal at states, but just getting to states is pretty impressive, and that's a shout-out in itself. And we also have the only fall team that is still in district playoffs is the football team, which has been seeded eighth, and we get to host Muhlenberg on Friday night. So yes, we have one more home team, and if we can win, we get to travel to New Oxford. So we have two local, local teams here going on. Shout-out to the high school homecoming court, Ella Bond, Ava Bachman, Ivy Bechtel, Amelia Etter, Kaylee Godfrey, Madeline Hale, Jasmine Nasser, Elena Ziegler, Davis Baum, David Zap, Landon McDaniel, Zane Lawrence Braden, Braden, excuse me, Smith, Bennett Sterner, Hayes Toomey, and Gabrielle Walker, and Ella Bond and Landon McDaniel were named select, were selected homecoming queen and king, respectively. Shout-out to those, and they got to do all the homecoming festivities at the dance that you mentioned and all those things. We also had part of our partnership with York Adams Academy. We'd like to congratulate our most recent graduate, Brooke Laslow, who met the criteria for graduation, and that occurred on October ninth. Brooke is still considering her next steps, but we are thrilled to extend our applause for her dedication in reaching this milestone. York County School of Technology Student of the Month, congratulations to our Spring Grove resident sophomore, Skylah Miller, who enrolled again at York County School of Technology, selected a student of the month in K-12 Teacher Development major. She was chosen for her exemplary She was chosen for her exemplary academic, technical, behavioral, and attendance standards, her student leadership, participation in extracurricular activities, and contributions to the school. Congratulations to all of those folks, and they all get a letter on behalf of the board congratulating them and telling them that we did indeed recognize them in this forum. So a shout out to all of those folks. Thank you. Mrs. Werble.
Hey, no, thank you. Just for my correspondence, Suzanne has placed this little document here, running down the next three months of meetings and action that we have. So make sure to take that home, put it on the fridge so you don't forget. And there's some memos there for you as well. But I wanted to thank the administration at SGE for your hospitality and your conversation this evening. Much appreciated. It was amazing. So thank you. That's all for me. Turning this back over to Dr. Renault for the legislative update.
On less happy news, the budget impasse continues in Harrisburg. There is really no end in sight that I can report. Both sides have their strong positions and they continue to hold those positions. However, I've been given good news, is our cash flow is still solid. Because of our investment performances, we are able to have that money coming in. And due to our fund balance, we should see no interruptions to anything at this point here. Again, this is the date of October 27th. Stay tuned. That may change as time goes on. I will tell you that I'm hearing things from other districts around the state that are much less fortunate, things such as a moratorium on sports, and that would go over not well anywhere. So we are blessed to have the very good financial standing where we are, the fund balance is so far so good. Just FYI, PSBA is hosting a webinar this Friday at noon. I know that Mark and I will be attending that. We've signed up for that. It's a Zoom kind of thing. And if anyone's interested in joining us from the board, you're welcome to. Let us know. We can either get you logged in, or you can come join us. But that is this Friday. It's just an update on where we are. As you know, we're members of PSBA, and they do provide services to us, and here's a service that they're providing. So that's where we are. I don't have anything else other than that, other than I'm glad we're here and not in some other districts around the state. So at that, Madam President, that's all I have at this point.
Thank you. Moving on to York County School of Technology with Mr. Ritz.
Yeah, York County School of Technology report, I was not there this past Thursday. Their agenda was fairly light, just standard things. They did hold a homecoming on Saturday. And one point that some other board members asked, and Dr. Rogers gave us, Spring Grove had 66 applicants and 26 were accepted for the 25-26 school year. To give you an idea of the applicants that didn't make it, and there's additional.
Can you repeat that? 66 applicants and how many were?
Twenty-six.
Wow.
And there was an additional five that were accepted but declined. Possibly they were given their second shop option. But obviously, I can share that. It shows all the districts in the county.
The need is high. So that what that is telling me is more kids want to go into that, those fields than they can handle at this point. Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Ritz.
Seven hundred applicants?
Yes.
And they only accept like 460, 50?
Wow.
So they're not, they're not barely meet, they're not even meeting half.
Yeah. Wow. All right.
If I may, very quickly, we also talked about this at one of the meetings I've gone to, and it's really a space issue. It really comes down to there's not enough room. Thank you.
Better. Eleven fifty-one applicants, four seventy-six enrolled.
And that's one grade level. Freshmen.
Right.
Wow. Wow. Okay. Moving on to York Adams Academy with Mrs. Baum.
All right, the York Adams Academy, we meet tomorrow evening. As Dr. Renault said, we did have one graduate, and we presently have seven students attending.
Thank you. Moving on to Special Committee Report, we did have a follow-up with the Pupil Services Department on the PACE survey. Just an overall review of what that is.
Good evening. I didn't know if anyone had any follow-up questions from the memo that I sent out regarding the PACE survey. From PCCD. Bill gets money for physical safety, and then mental health gets money as well. From PCCD, right now I have, we don't have a current grant because of the budget impasse, but right now I have $150,000 that was provided by that grant. And every year I've been here, it's been a little bit of a variance in the amount that's provided.
So what do they do with that data? What do they do with that data? Does that data just stay between?
It's three different agencies that come together. So it's, it's, I think I said it in my, let me get my notes here. I think I said it in my memo. So it's PDE. It's the Department of, no, this is the one I always get confused.
Don't worry about it.
Drug and alcohol and delinquency. And there's one more. There's three of them that work together. Department of Ed, but there's one more. And so they work together to, one is a community-based agency, and then they use this data to drive what we need to do to be preventative. So they look at the data that's given, and then they decide these monies are important to look at these different issues that are popping up, like for us, I would say vaping, right? In the last couple of years, vaping has just gone out of control. And one of the things we've used our PCCD money is for vape detectors, but now I'm thinking we ought to be doing some other kind of education pieces, so that's something I'd like to explore. So looking at what that data provides, and then trying to be more preventative in nature and come up with programs that address those areas of need.
Any other questions?
Yes, so we don't actually get our data. The data is put together, so we may be addressing something here that we don't have.
We get our data, sir. We get our own data.
Our own data.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
District data.
District data, but we also see what it looks like statewide as well. And community-wide, too.
Okay.
And there's always an option for parents to opt their child out of.
Yes, there is.
The other question I had, and one of the questions on there, it asks, it asks for male, female, or other. I'm still at a loss. I don't know what another is. Why is that question on there?
Sir, I could not address that because I did not make up those questions, but that is one of the questions you're right.
I don't know what another is. I don't know why we're asking kids what others are. But it's not such a thing, so. All right.
I'm just curious, do we have, do we have a lot of parents opting out or?
We don't.
Yeah.
We don't usually. Students also, like, if you saw the questions, I think if they answer certain ways, it would not, it would not allow that. Like if they say no, they're not vaping, they would not have any more questions about it. So it's kind of individualized to what students answer, and students may also choose not to answer certain questions, which would close other question windows to them.
Choose your own adventure.
Choose your own adventure. Love those type of books when I was a kid.
I know, me too. Thank you so much, Dr. Ludwig. If anyone has further questions, feel free to reach out to Dr. Ludwig. Motion to approve the official minutes. There is a list there. I'm just going to say as listed. Motion to approve the minutes?
Oh, so moved.
Second?
Sorry.
All in favor? All right, moving to the Treasures Report with Mr. White.
Good evening. Treasures Report for the month ending September 2025. General Fund Checking, we have $37,675,000. Nutrition Service Fund, $1,448,000. Capital Reserve Fund, $1,483,000. And then we have the Bond Fond, which is $7,851,000. Student Activity Funds last is $155,572. So moves Treasures Report.
Second, roll call vote on Treasures Report.
White?
Yes.
Werble?
Yes. All right, moving into departmental reports, Budget and Finance with Mr. White.
Budget and Finance Board Actions Requested, A Accounts Payable List. As listed, one through, one through number seven, so moves Budget and Finance.
Second, any discussion?
Yep, quick. I'm going to be the squeaky wheel. The, I saw there was another $20,000 spent in HVAC over the last month. And I will continue to ask the question whether or not it makes like financial sense for us to outsource, like bring in somebody, contract, you know, contract someone to fix a lot of problems or just have somebody in the maintenance and Bill's department that can do HVAC.
Mr. Stiles and I are working on a presentation for you, and it'll be here real soon.
Great.
And also, before we close out Budget and Finance, we were looking to do a committee meeting November 10th. Since we only received some comments from one board member, Eric, thank you. Appreciate it. I guess the other seven are having writer's cramp or writer's block. I'm not sure. But we're not going to move on and have a committee meeting if we don't get a couple items so we can facilitate a agenda here. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call vote on Budget and Finance.
Yes.
Yeah. Ball? Stein? Wilson?
Yeah.
Werble?
Yes. Buildings and grounds is for information only. Moving along, Transportation with Mr. Ritz.
Transportation Board Actions Requested, Item A, 25-26 Christ Bus and Van Drivers Approval of the Following Contracted Drivers as Listed 1 through 7. Item B, 25-26 Faithful Van Drivers Approval of the Contracted Additional Company Drivers for the 25-26 school years as Listed 1 through 4. So moved on Transportation.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote on Transportation.
Shear? Wilson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Rushinger?
Yes.
Stein? Paul? Yes. Ritz? Werble?
Yes. Moving on to Management Reports, Policy with Mrs. Baum.
Policy Board Actions Requested. Letter A, First Reading, Approval of the First Reading of the Following Policies. 005, Local Board Policy Procedures Organization. Policy 200, Pupils Enrollment. Policy 202, Pupils Eligibility of Non-Resident Students. Policy 308, Employees Employment Contract Board Resolution. Number 5, Policy 607, Finances and Tuition Income. Policy 805.2, Operations, School Security Personnel. Letter B, Donations, Acknowledgement and/or Acceptance of the Following Donations in accordance with Board Policy 702, Gifts, Grants, and Donations. So moved on Policy Board Action.
Second, any discussion? Roll call vote on Policy. All right, moving on to Personnel with Mr. Stein.
Personnel Board Actions Requested. I am a Memorandum Understanding Approval, the Attached Memorandum of Understanding between Spring Grove Area School District and Spring Grove Education Association for Paxton Drumheller to provide virtual instruction to SG Flex students synchronously with and in some manner as in-person students of her class for a period of 18 months, the first semester of the 25-26 school year. Item B, Acting Elementary Assistant Principal Approver of Dr. Randy Payne as Acting Elementary Assistant Principal for Spring Grove Area School District according to the terms and conditions set forth in the attached agreement effective as early as October 28, 2025. See Transfer Approval of Following Transfer. Item 1, Spring Grove Area Intermediate School Assistant Principal, Dr. Colleen Donnelly from Spring Grove Area Middle School, Launchpad Instructor to Spring Grove Area Intermediate School Assistant Principal effective the date to be determined. Item D, Administrative Appointment, Approval of the Following Administrative Appointment. Item 1, Spring Grove Area School Assistant Principal, Daniel Koishaw, Effective Date to be Determined. Item E, Teacher Appointment, Approval of the Following Teacher Appointment, Jalen Haming. Item F, Nutrition Services Additional Duty Assignments, Approval for Jacqueline Barker, Head Cook at Paradise Elementary to Assume the Additional Duty Assignment of Assistant Nutrition Support Coordinator. Item G, Transfer, Approval of the Following Transfer, Kristi Lanning. Item H, Appointment, Approval of the Following Appointments as Listed. Item I, Revised Extracurricular Appointments, Approval of the Following Revisions to Individuals for the 25-26 School Year as Listed. And there's a memo on that in case you want to know more information. Item J, Teacher Substitutes, Approval of the Following Individuals as Listed. Item K, Support Staff Substitute, Approval of the Following Substitute for the Classification as Listed, Deborah Trojack. So moved on Personnel.
Second, any discussion?
I had a question. Have we always had an Assistant Nutrition Support Coordinator?
So. Yes.
Okay.
Technically, we had the position for a number of years, and then I want to say our current Food Service Director last year was her first year. She wanted to evaluate, because this position can only be filled with a head cook. So this isn't a new position. This is like in addition to a head cook.
Okay.
Position. So she wanted to evaluate all the head cooks. We knew we were going to have a retiree coming up as well. She asked if she could just take some time and hold off. I said yes. And so now, starting her second year, she's evaluated and she's chosen one, so.
Perfect. Thank you.
I'd like to have a separate vote on A as in apple.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? All right, then we will do roll call vote on Letter A.
Barshinger? Yes. Ritz?
Yeah.
Shear? White?
No.
Stein?
Yeah.
Wilson?
Yes.
Ball? Yes. Werble?
Yes. Okay, roll call vote on B through K.
Ball? Yes. White?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Stein? Barshinger? Wilson?
Yes.
Ritz?
Yeah.
Yes. Confidential memos for Personnel. Does anyone need?
Okay, everything is detailed. I appreciate that. Does anybody need an executive session?
All right, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Renault to do some welcomes.
I love happy moments, and this is a great time. So I, Dr. Colleen Donnelly, would you stand, please? Congratulations. It is now official, and for those of you who don't know, she starts tomorrow as the Spring Grove Area Intermediate School Assistant Principal. She's been working there for a while, for almost three years, I think you said. And now she takes over this new role. I know, is Mrs. Peak still here? I'm not sure she was there. I'm sure the biggest smile in the crowd tonight is Mrs. Peak. So you guys are going to make an awesome team, and Colleen, excuse me, Dr. Donnelly, thank you for joining us. And if I may, I don't want to assume anything. Do you know any of the people sitting around you?
They don't.
Okay, because if they, who is, who are these? Your family, all of them? There's like 12 people to your left. Okay, because if you don't know this by now, if you don't know this by now, she's just given up a lot of time from her family, but we certainly appreciate what you've decided to do, and we're excited that you are taking on this new role. Bo Koschel, if you will, that's Bo Koschel, if you don't know. Daniel. He is joining us from Juniata School District, specifically he's the principal of East Juniata Junior and Senior High School. He lives in York County, about an hour and 20-minute drive each day one way. So he also has a very big smile on his face. He joins us as Assistant. He joins us as assistant high school principal, we're very excited to have him wear blue and white the next time he comes to make sure you look like a rocket. And he lives in Central, you and your family, I believe, live in Central School District. You've come through Dover and Hanover and other places, but he also, we're very excited that you decided to join us. Welcome to the team. He will start late December, early January. It's hard to get away up there when he's just him to try to hold the fort down, so he's taking Alicia, who also has a very big smile on her face. Because now she knows that once she leaves us in mid-December, that she has a very competent person coming in to sort of help out the high school. So congratulations Beau as well, well done. Thank you.
Absolutely, all right, moving on to program reports, curriculum with Mr. Barshinger.
Before we move on to program reports, I wanted to make a statement.
Her, what's the, it's the question. With Lee, we would like to move into executive session to do that, it's personnel related, that's not on the agenda.
Okay, we can move to.
So we'll move into executive section, we will be back, thank you. Your patience. Moving on to curriculum with Mr. Barshinger.